Located on Treaty One territory, the traditional lands of the Edition Abbe, Creed, Oshie Creed, Dakota and Denny peoples and the national homeland of the Red River Metis. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit and Métis people in a spirit of truth, reconciliation and cooperation.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. The mayor is not going to be here today, so she sends her regrets. I'd like to start the the meeting with adoption of the agenda. Can I move her, please?
So moved.
I'd like to start the the meeting with adoption of the agenda. Can I move her, please?
So moved.
Counselor Henn? Secondary please.
Stand up to the.
Yeah.
Secondary.
Counselor Jordan Moss. Be it resolved that counsel adopt the agenda as amended with the addition of the following items. Twelve point zero new business. Twelve point four FD. RDF. Central Fire Hall Addendum. And I also believe that we're beginning, yes?
I would also like to add twelve point five cancellation of the Committee of the Home Meeting. Scheduled for January twentieth. Due to conflict of error for four different councils.
Right, okay. Be it resolved that counsel adopt the agenda as amended with the addition of the following items. Cancellation of the January twentieth. Favor?
Aye.
Carrie. To be entering the public hearing process. Welcome everybody to the planning portion of our meeting. The hearing will proceed as follows. RRPD staff will present the application. The applicant will make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will make a presentation. Those registered as opposed will make a presentation. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concern. Concerns raised by counsel or presenters. At the end of each presentation, counsel may ask for clarification. But will not enter into debate. Please note, all person speaking must address the chair. At the end of the presentation, counsel will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentations accepted on that matter. Will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision. Opening the public here. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Slater, secondar. Counselor Feeblecore. Be it resolved that counsel hereby open the public hearing for the following planning applications scheduled for January fourteen, twenty twenty five at five thirty five P M. Zoning by law amendment number four four zero four, conditional use number three four dash, two zero two four subdivision application number S two four dash three zero seven one. Madam Planner, do you want to take it from here? Oh, sorry. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie.
You can start us so we begin. With zoning by law application by law number forty four zero four. On eleven thirty three and eleven forty seven, Green Point Road.
Excuse me, madam. Can you speak up or speak into the mic? Thank you.
I will continue.
Yes.
So the proposal is to rezone from agriculture limited to general commercial zone. And as you can see, in forty agriculture was zoned for now and in a position to go to general commercial. That we can propose to rezone a portion, not the whole one, but the portion of subject property. Approximately forty four acres, a plus minus at the east end of the property from E forty. Agriculture limited to G C, general commercial zone in order to establish a new mixed use. Building consisting. Of residential building in. Ten unit residential building and childcare facility. We can see the allocation map, the whole property hatched, but it's gonna be only there at the end. This is the zoning map. We can see the rest of the zone around it and proposed CG zone, only that portion we talked about. And this is site plan from the applicant. He will talk about it, right? So the RPD recommendation. It concludes. That your proposal amended application. Is consistent with developing plans so long as development agreement limits certain commercial uses that pose a potential land use. Conflicts. Childcare facility will require a conditional use application. We will talk about it later. It will be combined to the hearing. Rather than the RPD recommends that this application could be approved. Subject to applicant entering into development agreement with municipality to limit land use. This is what I have for that application.
Okay, thank you. We have two individuals that are going to be speaking on behalf of that. Let you go ahead.
Sure.
Adrian Freezen.
Once you just join in there and then we'll get to materials screen and then Valentina will get you to stop sharing this for a second while Andre is doing his presentation. Now, but now it's to put this a little bit closer.
No, no, it is, it is one. The password.
February, capital F, February eighteen eighty. Exclamation mark. For St. Andrew's guest. Haven't received your email yet for you. So it hasn't shown up. It's gonna forward it on to you again here. Keep it on your inbox right away.
Sure. And in the meantime, I'm just gonna send my presentation over to Valentina via email. That way she can bring it up actually.
Should be in your inbox there. Yep, there you are. Touch in. I think we're good to go.
Is the presentation showing?
Not yet. I would, yeah, try sharing now. You'll have to share it from within Zoom. There we go.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present and. Get the presentation loaded up here. My name is Andre Freezen. I'm a planner with Landmark Planning and Design. I'm gonna speak to rezoning application that was just presented by the planner. And I'm also going to include some information about the conditional use application that you'll be hearing after this. They both coincide and they're both integral, so I'll be sharing a little bit about both of them. So in terms of the project team, there's a variety of different consultants involved, but the property is owned by the Manitoba Métis Federation. I'm directly dealing with the Infinity Women Secretariat as well as Métis N four Construction and Marcel is here from. N four, in case any questions come up. So Valentina has already covered a little bit of information about the property. It's quite a large property. It spans all the way from the Red River to Whiskey Ditch Road. Across the provincial highway there. The portion of the site that we're focusing on is the portion that is frontage along Breezy Point Road. And the star on this side kind of denotes the area in which the new proposed structure, subject to the rezoning, would be located. The property is designated in the Red River Planning District Development Plan for this type of use. The balance of the property is designated for agricultural uses or designated agricultural restricted. In the Red River Planning District Development Plan, but the portion we're dealing with is designated as general development, allowing for more intensive uses to occur. Also, as already mentioned, we're looking to rezone that frontage portion. It aligns with where the development plan designation has been. From A forty to commercial general. So that zone allows for multifamily uses as a permitted use and for childcare facilities as a conditional use. Both of which we're here today to address. This is one of the images that shows the building that's being proposed. So it is a mixed use building. It includes ten residential units, childcare facilities, wraparound services and administrative uses. For the site. This is the the exterior courtyard area. We see one of the shared spaces inside the building, kitchen and a meeting space. As well as the childcare facility component of the building. Site plan shows how the new building will coincide with the existing site. And this is the building plan here. These were all submitted as part of the application package. The application has been circulated to provincial departments. No objections were received. As the planner mentioned, it's been recommended that the development agreement be entered into with the RM. No, no issues with that. The only thing that we recommend if that is a condition of approval is if we can work with you to expedite. Getting that development agreement crafted. I know there are some pretty tight timelines for this project with very stiff federal funding and other mechanisms. And getting that development agreement in place would be paramount as soon as possible. That's all I have. Does counsel administration have any questions related to the application?
Yes, counsel. Sorry, the expediting assistance part of that, what is it that you need? That you're looking for, you said?
I can speak to that. So, so, so the condition of including a development agreement. For the property is to limit the amount of, number of uses that you can have in the CG zone. So if we were to approve it today. Give it third reading, properties rezone to CG, we could have anything that's listed in the table that permits like an amusement enterprise. Bed and breakfast, cabaret, the whole works of the commercial zone. The intent that MMF has is to have, as they've said, that multifamily. There's an agricultural component with a community garden and other uses. We would be in correspondence with them to limit what those uses are. And then, of course, the development agreement council would be required to approve its signing. So you'd be aware of all the zones you're allowing and all the uses you're allowing in that zone, I should say. We would just be dealing with our lawyer for that and we would urge them in partnership with our other local governments to put a bit of a sense of urgency on this, to not limit the project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to note something important that St. Andrew's zoning ballot is limited in that it does to. Not have a zone dedicated only to multifamily land use. That's why actually applicant has chosen the commercial zone that which includes both of them. Multifamilies and daycare land use too. The multifamily is permitted, childcare conditional, so they kind of both, you know. Doing some bubble that we can use as only those land users that need it. So that's why actually it's been done and. RPD recommends to approve it with that condition of DA. You have two options to do it. Right now, before the third hearing. I mean, to go on DA and to put it as a condition kind of step, that condition before the third hearing or the. Option also to do it after the third hearing as a condition to any permits that gonna be issued afterwards. So you can choose. Both options are good. For that case.
Yes, counsel.
So by doing these, I'm all for this development agreement, I like that. But that's just strictly between the RM and. The developer or RPD part of that?
The development agreement would be registered as a caveat on the property. It'd be coming from us and our lawyers. It would just be a condition that's upheld by Red River Planning. They may want a copy of the development agreement, but would not be involved with the particulars.
Just real command.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess further to that too, Valentina had mentioned we could go second reading and then have the condition of the development agreement in place. And then go for third reading. I would recommend to just go through second and third with the condition that we will. Work to get it expedited, as Andre said, and not hold up their project anymore than it needs to be.
Yeah, both options are work.
Does counsel have any more questions? One question, what's your timeframe for this?
The consultant group and the project team has been working on this for. All over a year.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
My name is Marcela Poirier. I'm the Senior Director of Capital Projects for the National Government of the Red River Métis. I can advise that this was a fast track application. We submitted for funding December twenty twenty three, were quickly approved. Fast track design and I need to have the building completed by March thirty first, twenty twenty six. Meaning, correct, meaning we currently have our issue for construction drawings submitted for building permit. And we are moving with a purpose. My intention is to achieve substantial completion, so it achieves our funding by that March deadline. I am permitted by my funding to bring the childcare spaces online slightly afterwards. But it's a very, very fast timeline. If I may add one more comment for context. I really appreciate the work of Landmark Planning and yourselves for working with us in a government to government manner on this important site. And I want to just emphasize that there was existing childcare. We are reinstating childcare. There is an existing staff house. And there it previously, as you all are aware, had residential uses or tendencies. So. Our intention, as we contemplate the development agreement between the municipality and the Métis government. Our intention is to proceed into a master plan phase, understanding how much we have going on here. Our master plan for this portion is very specifically focused on health, wellness, safety, security. Our intentions are not to develop. Commercial retail in the traditional sense. It's really in the spirit of how that land has been used for decades, which is really health. Health wellness and that's, the master plan will bring in those departments. So I don't think you have any amusement parks to worry about. And I, we, I would appreciate you thinking about that fast track. I think we're going to. Be on the same page as we have been. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? No? Okay, can we move on to the next item?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, we'll have to because the next one is conditional use for that same rezoning, so. Let me just. So you need to stop sharing, Andre? Okay, good. So. The next application, conditional use for the childcare, CU thirty four, twenty twenty four, and the same property. And proposal to establish a childcare facility in commercial general zone. It is a conditional use in that zone. The same property disassembled in elevations from applicant to see. And is it connected to BL forty four, A zero four that we talked about it before? Hence the notation. Further, my report and the condition, should counsel wish to approve this application as a conditional use application. RPD recommends the following conditionals. Conditional, the conditional use is limited to what has been presented in application. Any further changes will require new a conditional use approvals. By applicant obtain all required permits from us and. Applicant to provide municipal digital copies of all construction and utility service and plans related to the development. By a. Applicant to obtain a commercial lot grading permit prior to construction, private roads and access must be constructed to a minimum. Of standard roads and vehicle access. Parkings also by the bylaw is signs. Business license should be obtained to each business and payment of capital development levies. Applicant shall be required to upgrade the portion of Father Attorney Road adjacent to the proposed. DG general commercial zone portion of the property should for a intensification require access from the existing municipal road. That's it. This is our conditions. Thank you, counsel.
Audrey Free.
Thank you. My presentation previously covered a lot of this information. I guess the only thing that I'd be looking for clarification on from the planner or counsel. As the last condition that was mentioned there about upgrading Father Attorney Road. Just wanted to make sure I'm reading it correctly that. It would be development that would be over and above what's being proposed right now. So if there is further development on the site, then the road would have to be upgraded. Not upgraded related to this station, is that correct?
For sure. If there should be, if it's gonna be upgraded to, but.
Yeah.
Attentive to the master plan.
The intent of that condition was that further intensification of the use outside of what was proposed, if it needed access from Father Attorney Road. The requirement would be that the condition would have them upgrade that portion to access it. As it stands right now, Father Attorney is just a mud road there. Not really much for access that we have. So it would be on the applicant to upgrade that portion. Now, that being said, with the condition with the development agreement for the zoning. We could apply said thing onto the development agreement and remove it from here if we'd like.
Yes. Counselor Flaker.
I think I'm aiming at you. So if we. As the nice lady said, we all know there was previously a daycare. And all the other buildings that were there and are there and yada yada. I'm a little confused why MMF even have to apply to this. Like the. There was a daycare there. We're keeping the date. So why, why they have to hoops and jump?
That may be a question for Red River Planning, but from my understanding, they're proposing a new building and they're introducing a new use of a new building that was not previously there. So that's where that falls into it. As, at the same time.
But this is a, maybe this is where I'm wrong then. This is a conditional use for the daycare.
Yeah.
So again, I'm asking. Why are you bringing this forward? If there was a daycare on that specific property, yes, it's moving from one building into another. But I'm not quite sure why Red River Planning needs to step into this. And create a conditional use. For, for something that was previously there on that piece of property.
Each owner and each applicant are different. Each one of them have to go a different condition. It's gonna written on his. Property and his building and his business license, so we have to do it for each different.
So if the original daycare was still open and MMF stepped up and bought that original daycare and proceeded to run it, they needed their continued.
That, that's something else. I think they might, but you know what? No, they will still have to do it again because. There are some different business license going on.
Sorry. Yes, we do the licensing. It has to pass a land use verification from Red River Planning though as part of the licensing. Just to confirm that what they're using that business on the property is permitted.
This would be no different than having, let's say, grand speed when changes.
And in that case, it's gonna be demolished. The old one. They're gonna build new one. So for sure, we need another one.
It's all being rebuilt.
Yeah.
Yes, Marcel Porter, I'd like to speak to that. Marcel, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. With the Father Attorney Road there, is there any plan? To have access off Highway four to come into that facility or will the only access ever be off of Breezy Point Road?
There's a master planning exercise that's currently underway to determine how that road will be used, but related to this application would just be.
Yeah, I get it. Right, okay.
Yeah.
My intention advising the nation to keep it a mud road. The rationale is we don't want it accessed by as many routes in as possible. People hunt on that land. All the time. We would very much not like to make it more accessible. But we will conform whatever we have to.
Counsel, any more questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Mister Chair. Going back to Counselor Slater's comment, like conditional uses run with the property, not the owner. So again, I. It is kind of a gray area of why they're requiring a conditional use to do the same with the, with the land. Because the conditional uses run with the land, not. An owner or a new owner taking over.
That's my understanding.
Deputy Mayor. So there is some stipulations around this and generally speaking, if you're, from my understanding. If you're moving from exactly the same, if you purchase a property where there's an existing conditional use. Right, that conditional use exactly as it's being run. That is, may allow for a transfer of conditional use. Conditional uses often have time lapses. If you're not using that use within a specific period, twelve months or whatever, no longer. You can no longer just transfer it over it requires. In this particular case, there's so many changes being, um, uh, you know, the, the original daycare, I don't know how many years ago it was. Run, there could be a difference. It's in a different building or pardon me, it's, pardon me, it's in a different building. Uh, we don't know about the childcare number of children. This is a completely different application. A conditional use only follows the property, um, for a specific period of time. If you're basically mimicking that, that same use, as soon as you alter that use. Um, it no longer complies to their original conditional use.
I'll piggyback of what Lisa said there, looking, uh, drawing your attention to question one. This conditional use is limited to what is presented in this application. So if anything new or different was proposed, it would require new conditional use application further to that.
Sure, is unique.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to the next item then.
Thank you, counselor. So this is application, a subdivision application number S twenty-four thirty-seven-one on seven-two-seven Edith. Avenue and proposal to create two lots in suburban residential zone. So this is the whole property. It's gonna be subdivided into. As you can see here on the SAM, that's gonna be identical, almost identical, eh, two lots instead of one. And by the zoning below, both of them are common in compliance, eh, more than zero thirty-four acres eh, inside eh, area. And more than a hundred feet wide. Um, we know that subdivision is inconformist with both development plan and zoning by law. And the mental, with transportation fracture enrichment warrants about extensive flood area all around. No other aid department raised any concerns. So RPD recommends that application be approved with the conditions. The, by applicant to pay all the taxes. Eh, in payment of any capital development dedication to the public reserve lands not exceeding of ten percent. And by applicant to provide written confirmation from municipality that professional engineer reviewed. All the existing drainage plans and alternations to the plan, if any. And that's it. That's what I have for that. Council.
We don't have anyone, uh, here to be in support of this application. Uh, does council have any questions?
I, I have some comments. So, Madam Planner, could you go back to the, uh, where it shows the two lots that you said you were creating to, to, okay, page before that? The very, the very first page, one more yet? Uh, okay, um, page, page, page one. Where it shows below it, proposed applicant to create two new lots. So, uh, they're not creating two new lots. There's already one existing lot there, like, like the full. Uh, two or somewhat acres. So, so it says in the application, creating two new lots.
Instead of one, it's gonna be two, but smaller. Yeah.
I know, but for dedication fees and that, we call it only creating one new lot. We're only creating one new title. Because there is already an existing title, there's that title will be split, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that wording should be changed. It's not two new lots, it's creating one new lot. And while you're on that picture, that picture is probably at least six, seven years old. Um, you know, can planning get more up-to-date pictures? Like even Google Map is more up-to-date than that. Like there's a house, there's a house on that lot now shows the garage. There's a house behind it to the north. Um, you know, so it just makes, makes it easier for council to be able to see the exact what is there.
Uh, unfortunately, this is our GIS layers we have for now.
Okay.
And we work with what we have.
Okay, just to make it clearer sometimes for all of us on council to see the exact location of it, uh, maybe in, insert a, a Google map as well. So again, while you're on that map, um, the, the SAM has. And I had a hard time figuring this out. So the SAM is in meters. So the, the one on Edith is fifty-two meters and then eighty-seven meters on Janish Road. So I know there's always the, um, difference between, uh, front, the front yards. So lot two would be, the front yard would be, um, touching on to Janish Road. So it's a longer, it is a longer distance, eighty-seven meters. But then in the application, it's all in feet. So again, if we could either do feet or meters on it, because the proposed is a hundred and seventy-one feet. The frontage on Edith Avenue, which is fifty-two meters. And then the proposed frontage would be on Janish Road of eighty-seven meters is two hundred and eighty-eight feet. So it's, again, it's just hard to understand or to look for, for those numbers, you know? So either we do meters, I know the SAM is in meters, so then maybe your report could be in meters or both. You know, it just makes it easier for everyone to understand and even the public looking at it as well.
Zoning below written with feet, so we stick to the feet, so.
Okay, I understand that, but then the SAM should be converted or, or, or like, or like measurements. I'm just saying it's easier for people to understand, so.
Yeah, we'll work with what we have and this is the sandwich we have, so, yeah.
Again, it can be changed. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? As I said, we don't have anyone in support, uh, opposed to the particular application. Um, can we move on to the next one? Oh, we got one more.
Yeah, okay, so. This is subdivision application S twenty-four thirty-seven-two on ten seventeen. So I'll board.
This one doesn't require a public hearing.
Yeah, we have to close public hearings, do the resolutions, and then we go back to the one that doesn't. Run, we're on.
So back to what Counselor Hunt said, where your wording said that the two lots, but do you not have to go in and change that to say it's the one lot? Cause it is one lot already, like Counselor Hunt had said. Is it wording that we need to change, is my question?
Um, that's not something significant that, it's actually is gonna be few eventually, so. It's almost.
It is because the wording would say he would be charged for dedication fee on two lots. Whereas the dedication fee has already been paid on, on, on the other lot. So all we're doing is creating one more title. Like that's always, always been done in the past, is we're only creating one new lot.
So I think that needs to be changed from.
In report, it's written one. If you can see the report.
Let me see too.
Two new lots, it said, proposed by applicant, two new lots.
No new, just two lots, but. Otherwise, it's, it's gonna be charged as one.
On the very first page, it said two new.
No, just two lots. But either way, it's gonna be charged as one because we're creating only one new. I'll write it down to me too.
The calculation for the capital development levies is handled at the municipality. I'm well aware that they're only creating one new lot and they'll only be charged levies, one new lot. Uh, shouldn't affect the conditions of approval whatsoever, however, for the report.
Right, yeah, I'm okay with, with our stuff. I just want the paper works to be right. That's all.
And, and like I say, I understand that. It's just that trying to make things clearer for all of us to understand and even the public when they read something, you know, so.
Hey, what we'll be doing now is, uh, closing the public hearing. Item four, going with, with public hearing. Like, could I have a mover, please? Uh, Striker, uh, Seconder. Counselor Dornbos. Be resolved that council hereby close the public hearings for the January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five planning application. All in favor?
Hi.
Carried.
Can we go back to gallery view? So when we do the voting?
Sorry, I missed that.
Uh, he just wants the, um.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um. Agenda item four point seven, resolution of decision for zoning bylaw amendment number four-four-zero-four. Second reading, could I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornbos. Seconder.
Er, one.
Wonder. Uh, any comments on this?
So Brayden, this would be to have anything fast track that needed from this or anything else? You're on it.
That's right. I was just gonna ask the condition of the development agreement. How do we include that for the zoning?
Um, we don't, that's what I'm confused about. You can't on a bylaw with a condition like that on it? So I think, uh, the condition at this point should be.
Added to the conditional use.
Yeah.
Over to the condition.
All conditions will be present on the conditional use.
You okay with that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Be resolved that council give second reading to zoning bylaw amendment number four-four-zero-four. I guess that would be as presented. Or.
Yes.
As presented, okay, fine. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. This is the, the third reading, uh, resolution for decision for zoning bylaw amendment number four-four-zero-four. Third reading, uh, this will be a, uh, will be for reported vote. Uh, could I have a mover, please? Uh, Counselor Striker and Seconder, please. Counselor Feeblecorn. Be resolved that council give third reading to zoning bylaw amendment number four-four-zero-four as presented. All in favor? Carried. Item four point nine, resolution for decision for conditional use number thirty-four twenty-two-four. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, uh, second. Counselor Striker. Where is the applicant owner of tax rule number four-zero-zero-one-zero-zero? Had made application for conditional use number thirty-four twenty-two-four for the premises described at. One-three-three dash one-one-four-seven Breezy Point Road. Purpose to establish a child care facility on a portion of the subject's property. Now therefore be resolved the conditional use number three-four-two-zero-two-four. Hereby be approved by council with the following conditions as read by the planner.
Mm-hmm, and we'd like to add one further condition being that development agreement. Um, I can come up with a quick line item for that applicant owner, uh, to enter a development agreement with the municipality. Um, to enforce, but, um, how would I go about the applicant owner enter into a development agreement with the municipality to. Uh, limit commercial usages on the property and other items as deemed necessary by the municipality.
It will add that as an amendment. All in favor?
Alright.
Okay. None, carried. Item four point ten, resolution for decision for subdivision for S twenty-four thirty-seven-one. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
For the, yeah, Counselor Hunt. Counselor, uh, second. Anyone have any comments on this? Be resolved that. Proposed subdivision S two-four dash three-zero-seven-one. The hereby approved by council with the following conditions read by the planner. Uh, do you want to read those, uh, conditions out?
Okay, so by applicant, the applicant submits confirmation writing from municipality stating that taxes on the land to be subdivided for the current year. Plus any areas have been paid or arrangements satisfactory to the council have been made. Payment of any capital development leaves. It been made and dedication of public reserve lands not exceeding ten percent of the subject land or in payment, in payment due. And by applicant to provide written confirmation from municipality that professional engineer review. Eh, of the existing drainage, drainage plan has taken place and alternations to the plan, if any, have been constructed. To the satisfaction of many municipality to ensure post development stormwater runoff. Is equal to or less than pre-development runoff levels.
Excuse me, can, who was the second of the last?
Uh, that would have been Counselor Hunt.
Who's the, okay, then who was the, the moved?
Yeah, Counselor Feeblecorn.
Thank you.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, um. Item number four point eleven, we have a subdivision number two-four. Three-zero-seven-two-n-seven-six Lockport Road, uh, says non-public hearing. Could I have a mover, please?
Yeah, we have to hear the application first.
Right.
Yes, thank you, counselor. So this subdivision application is twenty-four thirty-seven-two on ten seventy-six Lockport Road. And the purpose of that application is to create a one lot and residual lot in agriculture residential zone. So, um, in that zone, eh, there is a required site in area with of eighty acres and width of three hundred feet. And applicant proposes to be the first lot number one, ten point zero-seven acres and six hundred feet. And residual lot will remain seven, sixty-nine point four acres and more than six hundred feet. So there, both of them are not in compliance eh, for a site area, but with compliance to the width. And this is our air location map to see and the SAM of that subdivision, then in a smaller. Eh, on the left side, you can see the whole lot and the bigger one with the red bull is, this is the proposal on that we, they want to subdivide. And we know that application is not consistent with our PD development plan by a lot size minimum requirements of eighty acres policy. Both proposed and residual lot do not meet the required minimum site area requirements of eighty acres minimum and three hundred feet width. In the eight-eighty agriculture, eh, general zone, section point five point four, table eleven, as per RM. Of St. Clement zoning by law. And APD recommends that application be rejected. However, should council wish to approve, our APD recommends the following conditions. By applicant to submit to municipality in, in writing that, that taxes on the land to be subdivided for current year. Plus any areas have been paid or arrangements satisfactory to the council have been made. May also payment of any capital development leaves has been made to and by applicant to obtain all required variances from our R P D too. Thank you.
Counselor, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have some comments. Uh, could the planner also read the recommendation from Manitoba Agricultural and Resource Development, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry, the third one. By applicant, um, to submit confirmation in writing from Manitoba Environment and Climate Climate Change that existing sewage ejector system has been decommissioned or certified exemption has been issued.
No, that's not the one I mean, I mean, um, so first, uh, first of all, I've, I've asked several times for planning not to put the must not be approved in bold letters. Um, we don't put that in bold letters when you recommend approval, so it shouldn't be uh, for not approving it as well, that I've mentioned that several times, I know you're new here, so uh, maybe you can take it back to uh, planning then, but Manitoba Agriculture is recommending, um, because it's still in the spirit. So Manitoba Agriculture would be the only ones that would oppose it, which would cause, um, it, it to go to the municipal board then. But Manitoba Agriculture says it's in the spirit and even the planning board does somewhere and they're saying it does meet the spirit of the, of the, um, of the development plan of it's a retirement split, but because there's an ejector, there's need to need ten acre land and on and on and on. But could you please read for the record, um, what Manitoba, um, Agriculture and Resources had said? Or I can read it. It says, however, Manitoba Agriculture Resources Development has given a recommendation for this proposed subdivision and, and been given consideration under policy and it be given sub- consideration under policy four point one, point one, four, point one. Uh, no other agencies raised any concerns. So in addition, the application adheres to the spirit of the policy that supports retirees subdivisions of a resident from a, from a cultivated portion of almost seventy nine acres. So that Manitoba Agriculture says they don't have any concerns with it and it's kind of giving us the green light of how to word it. But again, planning board always has to put in there, bold letters must not approve and it's deceiving. So that's my comment on it.
Thank you for your comments, counselor. Yes, counselor Dornboss.
I agree with counselor Hunt, there is exactly something I was gonna say about that too, that there's, uh, they don't recommend it, but it's just because it's slightly smaller than what it's, what the parameters are, are for it. So I have no problem with this, we've done these in the past, uh, you know, it's taking a little portion of the land and, and taking it away from the farmland and eighty and just making it for our home state, so I have no problem with this whatsoever.
And, and just to be clear, I understand why the, why the, why the planning board recommends not approving it, because if Manitoba Agriculture did appeal it, then it goes to the municipal board, then the planning board can't come and argue or make a case in our favor for why we approved it, because it doesn't conform to, to the development plan. So I understand those reasons, but sometimes they get real adamant on why it must be um, rejected and not approved and then not taken into consideration the comments from Ma- Manitoba Agriculture, which is the ones the biggest organization or the biggest government entity that would have a problem with it. So again, just my comments, thank you.
I have a comment, well.
Sure, counselor Mondo.
Um, I'm not, not opposed to the, the splitting of the two proper, into two property. Um, I would just like, uh, potentially to follow the Mantle Environment and Climate Change potential recommendation of decommissioning the ejector system. Uh, there is other homes in the area and then with two homes potentially being serviced by this ejector system. I don't think we should allow that. And that's my comment.
Thank you, counselor Mondo. Any other comments? No, um, yeah, I'd like to make a comment on this, uh, all I can say is I'd just like to reiterate uh, counselors, uh, uh, presentation regarding Manitoba Agriculture and, uh, resource development, uh. Uh, to me, it's, it's very clear, uh, that the the direction that they, uh, they would like us to go and that would be to, uh, recommend. Uh, anyone have any other comments, concerns?
I just have one more question to the planner, which doesn't relate to this subdivision, but why does this one not require a public hearing and the other one did? Cause the other one, the previous one on either wasn't, a, a, a road wasn't being created neither. Uh, it doesn't have nothing to do with it, so I'm just asking the question why that is. One requires public hearing and one didn't.
Oh.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but.
You do have con- con- conditions to go almost on every, um, multi-lot subdivisions to go to public hearings and, um, because they were created two, actually one new lot, but two in total. And new lots that created with the new site area was going to be amended to the public hearing. And that one is, um, actually the one that also creates one, but in policy of subdividing only the house from the farming lands, it just created one. So.
Okay, okay, thank you.
A little bit multi, that one is not, so.
Okay. What to do is, uh, we could vote on this. Uh, okay, item number four point eleven subdivision number S two, four, three, zero, seven, two, N, seventy six Lockport Road.
Can I make a comment before, uh?
Sure.
Uh, can we, uh, in, uh, in the application here when we're going to potentially, uh, uh, vote for it in, uh, number three, can we remove or certified exemption has been? I'd like that, uh, removed and just, uh, period decommissioned.
Can I, can I hear him? The, the, the what?
Uh, I'd like to see the third condition.
Sorry, yeah.
It's my understanding though that the, uh, environment officer is gonna make a ruling on this, is, is, am I reading that right?
That's what I understand too, it's up to, I, I would imagine it's up to Manitoba, uh, environment to make the decision whether it's.
Yes, I, I think it would fall, uh. Yes, under the provincial government, not, not necessarily us.
We can't, uh, make a decision so they don't have to?
We, I don't think we can do that.
We make that one, our stipulations with, uh, approving this is that the sewage ejector, uh, cannot be used.
They're the ones that would go out and inspect it to make sure it hasn't been, has been decommissioned though. They have that expertise.
But it also says that they can potentially get an exemption, which I'm totally opposed to.
Well. That would, I don't think that's up to us, that's up to whether.
Can I comment on that? The province actually demands any property above ten acres be used as a sewage system as an injector, that's why they've done the ten acres and not less than that. So they do want to keep that ejector system, that's why the new proposed lot is ten acres. So they're gonna go on certify, certified exemption with the province.
That's why I'm asking that it be removed and they decommission the ejector system.
No, we cannot, it have to be a, a condition.
That's the condition of the province though, so.
Yeah, but we, we under that. Not we, but they have to do it as an applicant, they have to do it in front of the province, so we have to put it as a condition of approval.
Hey, we'll go back, um. Hey, uh, can I have a mover please?
So I would move this with the, with the three conditions that were, uh, in the resolution.
Okay, uh, the seconder please? Oh, people, let me go, counselor Feeblecorn. What, uh, oh, okay, I, I didn't see. Okay, be it resolved that the proposed subdivision number S two, four, dash, three, zero, seven, two be hereby approved by council with the following conditions and the following conditions we've already taken a look at. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Carried.
Mayor, can I make a comment? Uh, for the further resolutions that are coming up, can you read the resolution first and then we vote on bringing that resolution? Instead of having the vote and then bring the resolution to the table?
Sure, I can do, thanks. Uh, if we have a five minute break?
Yep, absolutely.
Recording stopped.
What do you do here? And what do you want? The resolution read first and then?
Yeah, so you, you, you read the resolution and then? Bowls thrown into the fire like that with joy. Hospital, it was like, holy shit. And I need nothing.
Yeah, but you got the Stephen Devon you went to, that was.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, at least your first one that.
Okay, I think we're good to get started again.
Yeah, done, you've done two years of.
That's right, you didn't have nothing to have that opportunity.
And I'm going to resume.
Recording in progress.
We're all here?
Yeah.
Okay. Adoption of the minutes? Are we good?
We're, yeah.
Okay. Uh, adoption of the minutes. Item five point one. Draft December ten, twenty twenty four council meeting minutes. Be it resolved that council adopt, uh, December ten, twenty four council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Dornboss? Uh, seconder please? Counselor Mondo? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number five point two, draft December sixteenth, twenty twenty four committee of the whole meeting minutes. Be it resolved that council receive the December sixteenth, twenty twenty four committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Feeblecorn? Uh, seconder please? Striker? All in favor? Carried. Item number five point three, draft December nineteenth, twenty twenty four special council meeting minutes. Be it resolved that council adopt the December nineteenth, twenty twenty four special council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Dornboss? Seconder? Counselor Mondo? Be it resolved that council adopt the December nineteenth, twenty twenty four special council meeting minutes as presented, all in favor? Carried. Now to be moving into the bylaws and policies. Okay, uh, be it resolved that council give. Okay, uh, be it resolved that council give second reading to bylaw number four four zero three. Being the short term rental bylaw as presented. Uh, I believe, uh, Brayden. And that our planning and economic development officer will be doing a presentation on this.
Yeah, so I have a little, just a little bit more info. Uh, so following the first reading. Of the short term rental bylaw, I spoke with Derek, you know, at the planning district, uh, just had a little bit more info for councils consideration. So. If council wish to restrict short term rentals in any way, such as by zone permitted, conditional use, primary use, accessory use. Et cetera, all the items that are listed in the zoning bylaw, then Derek. Strongly recommends that we amend the zoning bylaw to define what is considered the short term rental usage. And then include those restrictions within the zoning bylaw. He further went on to add that across Canada, uh, he's seen and heard that courts have often sided with the operators of these short term rentals. When the zoning restrictions aren't clearly defined, uh, but by including these in our zoning bylaw, we'd have stronger legal standing if these disputes were to come about. That being said. If we choose to pursue a zoning bylaw amendment, it would cost us, you know, in the area of six thousand dollars. Uh, and take several months to come into effect for that. Alternatively, I have a, we'll call it a housekeeping list of items I'd like to see in the future zoning bylaw. And I can certainly add this on to that growing list for future inclusion. Uh, that being said. We couldn't restrict the short term rental usage any more than what's defined in the bylaw. We can't say it's. You can't do it in this zone or you can do it in that zone unless we want to go through the amendment portion itself. That being said, regardless of how we choose to amend or not, just by granting third reading to the bylaw, we would. Regulate the short term rentals more so than what we've done in the past. So we'd have a little bit more oversight. Uh, and help to address the community concerns that we've had surrounding some of these short term rentals, but we couldn't restrict. Say on a rural residential zone off of River Road. If they meet all the requirements of the bylaw, we would have to issue them the license. But as it stands right now, if you want the Airbnb, you're just gonna go and do it. So.
Councilor Schrecker.
The only question I had, there are a lot of questions here, so I get lost. Um. Did I understand that in order to. To bring a thing. We would then want the council fee for corn owns the. Airbnb and he's gonna put it out there. So he needs to get the two hundred dollar license to run the Airbnb. But then he also needs to get a business.
Uh, yes, so as discussed in the first reading, we had settled on. Short term rental operators also requiring the business license, so they need one and the other.
So here's my only issue with that. Cause I guess very same weathered away the last time we talked about this. Soon as you bring in a business license, do anything. That opens the door for RRPD to step in. Which in turn, he takes everything to a whole new level. And becomes very frustrating for. I I've lost track of how many people I've heard from over that. Um. I understand what you're saying and that the budget conversation, you know, whether we want to hire someone to get our zoning stuff done. I also am happy to see that we're not going to leave this Airbnb issue woody woody with. Nothing to stand on. We only had a couple of complaints to put up on wood. I'm wondering if we shouldn't. Put this bylaw in place. Take that yet. Cause really too sweet, there's no one's going to man it. This is a good base. Now, for fever point gonna open it and let's hope he waddles on over here and buys that, buys a thing. Um. And like, if we do. In the budget, do the zone like, it's it's a big picture here. I, my question to everyone is maybe we would not be, would we not maybe be better just to put this in play like, yes. You need to come and buy a two hundred dollar. Short term rental. Piece of paper and let's skip the part of the business license until. We as an RM come together and. Get those bylaws and zoning things cleaned up as a whole. Because my, I just. I've I've lost count of how many people have tried to do business, get a business license and then run. And into RRPD and everything, it it doesn't matter. Stuff goes off the rail and I sit there and go, I'm so sorry. So I understand that we want to keep our thumb on the fault and if, as I said when we started all this. Putting these little things in place, having them on the bus. Whether the resident buys a license board. Should something happen, it's all bleed allowed for it to be opened by bylaw. To go in to then real. And I, I just think. I would be more comfortable with all of this if we took the business license out. With the agreement that we would go back and revisit it. Once we get our own zoning and bylaws procedure thing done. Food for thought.
Counselor.
Hi there. Uh, so I have a few comments. The, the first comment I'd say, like, the intent of the bylaw. Goes to read, but then it also says, um, you know, establishing fees and promote responsible practices. While protecting public health, safety and supporting local and economic growth and development. So the more rules and restrictions you put on something, you're not promoting growth and and development. I think this is a good start. It's a good idea, but, but. I'm sure this is taken from another municipality that does have many concerns. With. Uh, these type of short term rentals, cause some of the, some of the requests in this one. Are unrealistic, I think, uh, you know, asking for insurance, that's good to a point. But first of all, we are picking on short term rentals. What about long term rentals? There's lots of long term rentals in St. Andrews. We don't ask for insurance purposes for them. A bank will ask for insurance for in for in copy of insurance because they have a financial investment in it. Um. You know, asking for to keep records for, for three years, names and license plates and that, that's, you know, goes against, uh. The of the freedom of information, like, we can't be asking for that kind of stuff. And then to say that we can demand that stuff and ask for those. Records, uh, and the operator has to hand it over is is again ridiculous. And I think the most ridiculous one is. That someone has to be on call within fifteen minutes, twenty four hours a day, three hundred sixty five days a year. Like, what other kind of? Police aren't even that responsive or a doctor or anybody. Um, if it's that much of a concern, it would go to the RCMP. Um, it's good to track these and to keep the. The number that are out there. Um, I s- I was against the business license when we did the first reading on it, against the business license. In the first reading that we did, it has right in there from the other municipality, does not require a business license because you're licensing. Each one of the residents. Now, you know, so, uh, that is the license and I agree with the two hundred dollar charge of first of all, and then. Nothing is going to change, so a hundred dollars should be after that, same as the business licenses for the rest of the businesses in within the, within the municipality. Um. You know, so, and like I say, it's the business license wasn't required in. In the other, in, in the first reading, and I was against putting it into this one too, because one or the other. And the other thing it says here. That if, um. You know, the owner changes hands, whatever, uh, I again, just like the last application we had about a conditional use, the. Airbnb would stay with the property and, um, rather than with. The owner, so if the owner sells, you know, the, the information would be the same. Um. You know, I can ask, ask the owner to renew it, the new owner to re- to renew it, but to charge him two hundred dollars again is, is. If that's the fee, I guess that's the fee, but, but anyway, but the bottom line is, we want to put support local and economic growth and development and, and. Without it being restrictive, like I say, I, we do need to know some information and. I think the area that myself and councillor Feeblecorn have is the two probably largest areas with these types of. Of, um. Rentals and I've had not had one phone call. I had one phone call a couple of years ago. It was, um, you know, they talked to the owner of the, of the rental and it was. Uh, settled, uh, you know, just a mis- a mis- a mis- a miscommunication, so. Whether we go back and and take some of these heavily restricted. Um, the definite definitions and and lines out of there. Or, you know, like I said, I don't agree with both the S, the short term rental license and a business license. Um, they contradict each other and we know. You know, we had one, remember a couple of years ago, a person wanted to change, uh, make, make, make bracelets, whatever, and. Planning Board makes them get a con- uh, conditional use, the same thing would be in this area here until we changed the zoning. And that's a whole new nightmare, you know, of changing the zoning. That's what those places along the creek are for. Recreational purposes. Uh, whether it be short term or long term rental, but we shouldn't be discriminating between long term and short term rentals. Um. Asking for insurance and and fire inspections and, and we don't ask for who's in a long term rental. And that kind of stuff. So, in a way, I just think it needs to be. Tone down a little bit and I hope we can agree to do that. Thank you.
Councilor Dorn. I agree with councillor Schlecker there, uh, and councillor, I'm not a big fan of the business license whatsoever on this thing. They're already paying something for short term rental fee. Um, I agree that the fee, uh, at two hundred. Dollars should be one time fee and then a renewal fee should be, uh, a lesser dollar value if you're gonna renew it because you're not reapplying for it. Um, I've gone over this a few times over the weekend and, uh. You know, part of me is a little bit souring on it, uh, just based on, um, if you're gonna have an Airbnb, you're gonna have an Airbnb. It's, it's just the way it is. You're just gonna do it no matter what, right? And I personally have not any complaints, councillor has had no complaints, you've had no complaints on it. Um, I like it in principle, but I don't know if there's something that we can do to, to change in it. I've kind of lost at this because I do want it, but then again, I don't want it because what's, what is it gonna change? Is it gonna change even what's happening right now on the arm of St. Andrews, especially in the Petersville kind of boy, uh, you know, uh, the Netley area? I don't know if it will. That's just my comments on it.
Counselor Schley.
I agree. Look at daddy. Um. It's a little exasperating, but you, you built on what we talked about the last time. So I thank you very much for all of that. I think the two things that you've turned the light bulb on for me is I do not want three, four people to have to get business. That's not what this is about. And until maybe going forward, we could. Condense it a little bit. We need something there so that if we do have an issue, bylaw has a reason to go with it. That is my number one thought to this. And that's what happened to us when we. Did get into trouble. Bylaw had no reason to be there. So I would like to see it stay on that realm. Hopefully it stays on that this. Condensed version, uh, after budgets, hopefully will be a three, four month time. And then I wanna see it go where like you're saying. Um, I don't wanna see it thrown away, but I just would like to see it fine tuned and we. They go to business.
I'm hearing a lot of discussion around the business license requirement and, oh, and councillor Mondor had his hand up, sorry.
Sorry, councillor Mondor.
Hi, um, we talked about this extensively at one of the previous meetings and, uh, we came up with a business license, uh. I don't know if you guys remember, but this is a business. These people are operating these, uh, these homes and these Airbnbs and these, uh. These places as a business. I, I gave you the, uh. Uh, my experience with the selling of our cottage, the person that purchased our family cottage that we had for twenty five years. Instantly made that an Airbnb. They purchased it to make it a business. They deserve to have a business license. We are covering ourself with them getting one. That's my comment.
And now that we've had a little more discussion. Since I can add that with the business licensing, when they make application, it's subject to land use confirmation review by Red River Planning. The issue here is that the use is not defined in the zoning bylaw. So how can they define, say, whether it's permitted or not? We don't even have it in there.
Councilor.
But the planning board will try to find some way to.
Yeah.
I don't wanna use the word aggravate, but try to, try to do that. In, in, in comment to councillor Mondor's comment, um, I understand that, but. Uh, it was in the village of Denard and the village of Denard does not have business licenses no more for the reason of being. An example was similar to this. They hired, uh, uh, a cottage owner hired someone to come and do some tree trimming within their, within their yard. Uh, a tree fell on a house and the operator never had insurance. So the person had a false sense of security figuring that because he had a business license with the village that. He was a reputable, a reputable owner or a reputable businessman and never had. And had insurance and that kind of stuff. I know we're asking for insurance, but, but still, um, the purpose of the business license. So they don't use a business license no, no more for that reason, but we're already charging them for a license for the short term rental license. The purpose of the business license is also to track that business, which we're doing with the short term rental license. So. Again, and I'd like to see, you know, some of that stuff taken out and try this bylaw for six months. Um. It just gets so involved then when you start changing zoning for different, different areas, RR, SR. Um, egg restricted. Um, it doesn't even have to be along creek properties or recreational properties for it to be a short term rental. Um, so, like I say, I'm not opposed to the intent of it, but like I say, keep, please, everyone keep in mind the intent of it. That, that, that's last line should be up at the top, you know, while protecting public health, safety and supporting local environmental growth and development. That should be our main intent of the bylaw. And that should be front and center.
But I don't think that having a business, uh, license is a detriment into, uh, any of that. Uh, having a business license is just, uh, uh, another thing of opening a business. We're not, uh, we're not stunting, uh, economic development in any way with a business license of, uh, a couple hundred dollars. Like, I, I think you guys are overlooking the simplicity of this. Uh, yes, we don't have it in our bylaw, but in the future we will have something. Uh, you know, six thousand dollars to implement something into our bylaw is, uh, somewhat extravagant, but over time we will amend that and and put other things in there. So. That's, uh, you know. And we, and not only, uh, yes, my, our cottage wasn't Denard, but there's many Airbnbs and these businesses. Throughout all of St. Andrews, uh, Ward one, Ward two, uh, all along River Road, uh, so. You know, they're operating, there's many of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Alyssa.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I think there's a bit of a misconception that if, if it's not defined in. The, the land use has to be defined within the zoning bylaw. If there is no category for it, it has to fit into some category. It doesn't mean if you don't get a business license that it doesn't apply to you. That's not the case. Um, and the case even with this, with the short term rental, even though they don't get a business license, they still need to comply to the land use regulations. Our issue right now is we don't have something that defines it very clearly, but all land uses have to be. Uh, when they're go through Red River Planning in some way, shape or form. Though in Denard, if they're not getting business license, people that are not complying are, are, it's going to be by complaint driven, right? Because they're obviously not reviewing any of these business applications. So I just want to clear up that misconception. Having a business license doesn't mean that people don't need to comply to what the zoning bylaw says. They will fit it into a category.
So, so with that. And I appreciate that, that clarification, but the thing is though, the land is still being used for the same. If it's being used for an Airbnb of what the. Uh, intentional SR land is used for, if it's a long term rental or if it's. Person living in there full time, the land is still being used the same for a short term rental. So there shouldn't be. A discrepancy between short term rental, long term rental or, or a, um, full time resident, other than now we're tracking who. Who is, what is what, whether it's a, a, a rental or. Or, but like I say, that's, that's the problem. There's a discrepancy or between short term rental and long and long term rental. And that's the problem that I have with this.
I, I would suggest that maybe a definition clear that up because I think generally people that are. Uh, renting on month to month or. Leases, um, is not typically. The issue is the short term, um, rentals because it impacts the neighboring properties with the amount of traffic and. And, um, just, there's just a generally a lot more traffic and and activity going on around that. So. Again, that's council's decision, but you know, every municipality typically doesn't want to include like a, a. Again, that's council's decision, but you know, every municipality typically doesn't want to include like a a yearly lease. A rental compared to the activity around a short term rent, but that's council's decision.
Uh I would have to make a comment on that, that I don't believe that's the case because um. You know, the same people are still gonna be coming to stay there for the weekend or for the month or for the year. You know, I don't and I and again, I'm I'm basing my con- my comments and decision on on complaint driven and I've had zero. And um you know, a couple of phone calls, a couple of concerns, but not real complaints, more of a concern. Talked to the owner, I think operators, you know, with this bylaw. We're kind of um condemning the the operators of these things before. We've had any complaints even, or even if there's a um a complaint mechanism to be dealt with by the owner. And like I say, to be accessible by phone within fifteen minutes, twenty four seven, three hundred sixty five days a year is unreasonable. Um if anything is that desperate, this should be going to the RCMP, which won't even get that kind of a of a response time. I'd like to see this tabled and brought back with some different wording in it and uh tone it down a bit. And I understand the reasoning for it, where it come from, and there probably is a lot of situations up there, but there's. Many uh condos and and um and uh more condensed housing. In another area where this bylaw I believe came from.
I I just wanna say I hate wasting your time, because I know you're so super dippy, but could we send it back? Indent it a bit.
I have no concerns, if you'd like to see it amended, just need a little direction on where we'd like it clarified, I understand.
I think we're in it, most of us are in agreement to get rid of the business license, part of it. Um let's try to. I I I want it there so that if something happens, by law has a reason to go in. Are we all on agreement to that?
No, I'm good with this in principle the way it is, I I totally, but I think we should table it to uh, you know. And then deal with it then, once we bring a little bit more direction.
Are we are we doing substantial revision of the bylaw or can it be amended right now? Because the business license is just a change of the wording, not required. The operator being required to be, you know, twenty four hours minus fifteen minutes per day, if we'd like that. Completely removed or specified certain period or time of day, we can do that or have it removed entirely.
So and take out the insurance. Food program insurance or whatever, that and it's I don't know who said. Let's try this for six months, because we're budget's not gonna be until March. And then we can, once we come together on this zoning and bylaw thing, boy, we'll just be smoking.
So you wanna table it, you wanna table it?
I don't wanna table it, because. Airbnbs can be rented for ice fishing and all the rest of it, I don't, I I want something on the book. It opens the door for bylaw if something goes up. That make sense?
Yes, just a comment, I know when it comes to, if if the issue is the noise, the nuisance, the things, some of the things that come with. These rentals, I mean, from my understanding, you can report these uh rentals to whoever the hosting company is, whether it's Airbnb. Complaint driven and you know, they could, I'm sure they have a way of um removing some of these. You know, residents of being part of their um rental options. If there is numerous complaints and not abiding by, I'm sure Airbnb and them have rules and regulations as well. It's just a comment, right? So I guess the question here is, we wanna amend it now or do we wanna table this?
I would like to see it amended if possible.
Counselor Dornbos.
Uh I I personally like to table it till we can get uh maybe. A little bit more information to Brayden instead of just trying to try to change three three sentences on it, um that's just my personal opinion, but.
Counselor Hunt.
Yeah, I'd like to see it go back, um you know, that way we're not. You know, read it again and then when the changes come back to us, if it could be stroked out and highlighted. Uh so we can see what the changes are, um I understand Counselor Slaker's comment about ice fishing, but. Uh the the windows are closed and nobody else ground the fire yelling and 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 partying. Uh in the wi- in the winter time, so, but like I say, I'm not against the policy or the bylaw, it's just that it's too restrictive and we should. You know, enforce the language that we have, it's for economic growth and 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 development and and the safeness. Safer of the of the municipality and and. Without the restrictions, I don't think those help at all. The growth and the economic development, so that's, I would like to send it back and 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 do some some, I think. Changes that are greater than just some uh wording changes, so. Thank you.
Okay, uh Counselor Mondo, comments?
Um I don't have any uh opposition to tabling it, um. I think we're trying to get ahead of uh potential uh uh future outcomes here and uh. If we need to take more time to get it right, that's uh fine with me. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Feeblecorn.
Uh yeah, I yeah, I'm okay with tabling it, so. Okay, but uh I guess what we'll be doing with uh uh this particular short term uh rental bylaw is uh tabling it. Uh I guess in a sentence, uh we're just sending it back to uh. Get it a little reworked and.
To the drawing board.
Yeah, put it back to drawing board, but uh we can get a little bit more uh. Uh information and uh find something on it. Okay. So. We'll move on. Okay, yeah. Deputy uh CEO of the McWilliams is gonna be speaking on this next resolution. Uh be a result that council give first reading to bylaw number four, four, zero, nine. Being a bylaw to regulate and prohibit noise as presented. Uh nuisance noise as presented, can I have a mover, please? Counselor Dornbos, uh secondary. Counselor Feeblecorn.
So this is just a remake of the bylaw, it's the original bylaw is from nineteen eighty five. Horribly outdated, horribly hard to enforce, um so this has just a new bylaw that's been created, it's been vetted. Um by uh legal, um it's also been reviewed by the Director of Municipal Safety. And uh we feel it's ready to come for a first reading at this point.
Does anybody, anyone have any questions or concerns?
Just just one comment, uh yeah, it's it's quite old, one bylaw was nineteen eighty three and another one was nineteen eighty five. But basically it just restricts noise from eleven PM at night till seven AM in the morning. So it doesn't change nothing during daylight hours, uh that isn't already covered under our noise bylaw.
Okay, I'll read look the uh resolution again, uh be a result that council give first reading to bylaw number four, four, zero, nine. Being the bylaw to regulate and prohibit nuisance noise as presented. Uh all in favor? Opposed, none, carried. Well, moving on to uh the check detail report. Item eight point one, January tenth, twenty twenty five, check detail report. Uh be a result that council approve the January tenth, twenty twenty five, check detail report as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Stryker, uh secondary. Dornbos. Uh any comments, concerns, questions on that, yes, go ahead.
Um I did kind of question in both the credit card payment and I'm still waiting for the email, but I didn't have it done.
Okay. Uh anyone else? All in favor? Carried. Item number nine, one, Soft Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame, uh support request letter. St. Andrews residents being inducted. Uh be a result that council authorized an advertising sponsorship. In the amount of, we haven't figured that out, to the Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame and Museum. For the twenty twenty five Hall of Fame induction ceremony. Uh would anyone like to speak to this? Ken, yes?
Um this is, uh we continue to get these and uh I don't know why we continually get them, I I understand that there is a St. Andrews residence. That uh there was an email sent at a later date to uh to Sherry, saying, oh, by the way, there was someone who played in, you know, twenty five years ago on the on the Smithy's team. Again, this, nothing's current with this, uh I would say we just don't bother with these anymore, that's just my personal opinion.
Anyone else? I actually concur with uh with uh Counselor Dornbos, what I'd like to do with this is uh. Uh file it for information. Yeah, okay, we're okay with that.
I agree with that.
Nice item.
Just just one comment on that, like we have supported it in the past, but that's when somebody was winning an award. Um so a couple of years ago, there was some St. Andrews residents that were up being inducted to the Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame. And we did support it and we did buy a table for their. In their name too, for their members, so they could go to it to be inducted into the Hall of Fame, so. I don't wanna see them not come to us no more, but for sure, if there's somebody, a St. Andrews resident that is being recognized or is getting uh inducted into the. Uh Hall of Fame for softball that we look at it then.
Point taken, pardon?
That lady is getting. Inducted.
No, I believe it was uh personal alone one time. Item number nine point two, Manitoba EMO, twenty twenty five, local authority workshop. January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five in Gimli and February seventh, twenty twenty five virtually. Uh be a result that, I guess what we have to know here is uh who would like to go to this? Okay, right, uh can I have a mover, please? Okay, Counselor Stryker and secondary, please. Counselor Mondo. Okay, uh nevertheless, um. Lisa, do you know uh anything about this?
Uh unfortunately, I don't, I don't, I can't speak on it.
Um I think this is similar to uh what Napier put on uh last year, um. Uh anyone interested in going? No, okay, what I'll do is just file this for information then. Uh item nine point three, aquatic invasive species uh. Virtual summit. Uh okay, be it resolved that, uh well, I know Mayor Sewell is uh indicated that she wanted to attend this. Uh this is a limited to only uh two participants, so we only have uh. Uh one, one, one spot available, is there anyone who would like to attend? Okay, uh I'll read the resolution. Uh can I have a mover, please? Counselor Stryker. Uh secondary. Counselor Feeblecorn. Uh be a result that Mayor Sewell will be authorized to attend the aquatic. Invasive Species Visual Summit, which is being held on January two, two, twenty twenty five. All in favor? Opposed, carried.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Uh sorry, didn't, sorry to interrupt, going back to the previous one for the softball thing, yeah, uh someone just said it is a St. Andrews resident, but. Would council be agreeable to reach out to the resident, like I don't think we need to advertise, but. Reaching out to see if that person is still a resident of St. Andrews and offer to buy two tickets for them, uh to to go to the induction. Of of the softball Hall of Fame, it's eighty five dollars a ticket or two tickets is a hundred and seventy dollars. Um I'd I'd rather do that than advertising if the person is still living and a resident of St. Andrews. Thoughts?
My thought is it's uh it was such a long time ago, Counselor Hunt, that I don't even know if there's uh anything. Again, uh I understand what you said originally about the the dinner and the table and stuff like that. Uh and I would agree with something like that, uh where a word award is being done as an individual, but as a team. I'm I'm not one to say that uh we would be giving any money for that, that's just me. But uh if there was an individual award, say Counselor Hunt was gonna get a award at the dinner, I would no problem with it, but because it's a space team, it was twenty five years ago. Um these things are, you know, they kind of lapse in my mind and it's just uh for me wouldn't be an important thing to get money for as a fair dollar, so.
Okay, I'm okay, I just brought it up for discussion, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hunt. Item number nine point four, Gimli Seniors Resource Council Incorporated annual financial support request. Uh be a result that the council authorize a financial contribution in the amount of. Four hundred and thirty four dollars to the Gimli Seniors Resource Council Incorporated. And that this amount be added to the twenty twenty five budget as part of our annual contribution to the center, can I have a mover, please? Counselor Stryker, uh secondary. Uh Counselor Hunt. Any comments on this? No, okay, all in favor? Opposed? Three, I mean it's defeated, sorry, defeated, yeah. Defeated. Okay, the next uh item, uh item nine point five, armed meeting. February sixth, uh twenty twenty five in Dougal, uh who will be attending? Counselor Dornbos, Counselor Feeblecorn. Uh Counselor Stryker, no, okay. Counselor Moretti and Counselor. Uh Mayor Sewell, rather, okay, be a result that. Mayor Sewell, Counselor Dornbos, Counselor Moretti, Counselor Feeblecorn. Uh be authorized to attend the armed meeting, which is being held on February sixth, twenty twenty five in Dougal. Uh can I have a mover, please? Counselor Don. Okay, secondary. Counselor Stryker. All in favor? Carried.
Sorry, who was the first, who was, was it?
What's that? Uh it was uh Counselor Dornbos and uh Counselor Stryker. Man- Manitoba Planning Conference, March five through seven, uh twenty twenty five in Brandon. Believe that anyone is gonna be attending this, so I'd just like to uh. Uh file this for information, but I'll put it out it out there anyway. Uh be a result that uh be authorized. They're authorized to attend the Manitoba Planning Conference, which is being held on March fifth through seventh. Uh twenty twenty five, anyone will be attending? Okay, no one will be attending, so we'll just file this for information. Moving on to new business. Uh new business, uh item number twelve point one, it's a uh RFD. Petersfield Curling Club Capital. Capital Grant. Capital grant. Oh, did I miss a section?
I wanted information.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Getting ahead of the station, correspondence for action, does uh everyone read the correspondence for action?
Yeah, I've got a comment.
Okay, dear.
Um I wanted to thank the men for putting uh R P D permitting stuff on there, I think it's a fantastic tool, and I. Really like to see how the comparables are between the the other communities, so thank you very much for doing that.
And who are you thanking?
I'm Miss, we're gonna be thanking councillor Stryker.
Uh anyone have any other concerns or comments?
I have a comment, um just trying to find which number it was here. Uh the recycling one, ten point three, ten point two, um. If you see on there, the R M is getting back a hundred and eighty six thousand dollars for our Wares Program for recycling. Uh we recycle five hundred and thirty tons, um like to thank the residents of Saint Andrews, because they're they're the ones that do that. But I'd also like to make a comment that I'd like to see us working on our curbside pickup program within the South there. Uh results have shown, when we did a solid waste study and audit a few years ago, that we could increase that number. By fifty percent um with curbside pickup, that the recycling would would um pick up that much, as well as the diversion rate. Things going into the municipality would go down, which uh is an expense within the municipality of having to redo ourselves prematurely, and if we could. So we can redirect uh stuff that shouldn't be going into the landfill, let's get it done then, thank you.
I mean, yeah, I have one comment too, and that's to do with the uh uh letter uh sent to us by uh. Uh the province regarding uh number eight highway and number uh sixty seven, the junction there uh. I'm uh hopeful that uh they will uh uh look at that and uh come up with some solutions they've indicated, but they. Will be looking at it uh in this year, and uh I hope they're true to the word on that. Uh anyone else have comments on that?
Yes, I want to piggyback on what councillor Hunt said about the recycling um.
At Donald Fart Hall, there was uh extra bins put this year, and uh I had some verbal communication with some residents, and they're quite happy that those. Were put in, even though on December twenty fifth, they were packed solid, but uh it was it was great to see that there was those extra bins were there for the recycling. Because originally wasn't a terrible mess there this year, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm here with them. Anything else? Okay, we'll. Be filing this for information, okay, I'm gonna move on to uh new business. Uh new business, uh item twelve point one. R F D Petersfield Curling Club capital grant. Uh be it resolved that the municipality approve twenty twenty four capital grant of fifty thousand dollars be. Held in the recreation reserve until December two twenty twenty five. And be approved for payment after the front door redesign project is completed by Petersfield Curling. Uh any comments on that one? Can I have a mover, please? Okay, uh and. Councillor Hunt. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Item number twelve point two, F R F R F D, Saint Andrews Heritage Center. Twenty twenty three capital grant, be it resolved that the municipality approve. The twenty twenty three capital grant of six thousand dollars currently be being held in recreational reserves. Be extended and held for payment until December twenty twenty five. And whereas the fund be used for the purchase. And installation of security equipment at the Saint Andrews Rectory and Heritage Site. Instead of the purchase of a new lawnmower tractor as requested in the original capital grant application. Therefore, be it resolved that the funds from the twenty twenty three capital grant be held. In recreational reserves and use for security upgrades as required. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Don. On second. Seconder, councillor Feeble Corn. All in favor? Carried. Okay, um item number twelve point three, fire hall number two, bearing of new members. Be it resolved, the council authorized the hiring of Ian O'Glynnic and Paul Kyler. Um auxiliary repass members as members of fire hall number two, Saint Andrews. As recommended by the fire chief, can I have a mover, please? Councillor Stryker. Okay, Mondo. All in favor? Item number twelve point four, R F D, Central Hall Fire Chief Amendment. Addendum, rather. Be it resolved that council accept the recommendation and approve the hiring of Kevin McKay. As the new fire chief on the Central Fire Hall effective immediately, can I have a mover, please? Stryker and seconder, please. Hunt, councillor Hunt. All in favor?
Aye.
We have no one in camera tonight. And uh that pretty much concludes our business today, I'm gonna ask for an.
What's that?
We forgot item twelve point five, which is.
Now, would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, please, yeah.
Be it resolved that council of Saint Andrews, council, the January twentieth, twenty twenty five committee of the whole meeting.
Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Dorn Boss, uh seconder councillor Stryker, or councillor Mondor. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Uh now we'll move to the adjournment. Item number sixteen, adjournment, uh be it resolved that council meetings be adjourned at. Seven thirty one. Uh can I have a mover, please? Oh, do we go through that?
Sure, there we go.
Okay. Councillor Doran Boss, uh seconder, please. Councillor Mondor. Uh true. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, good day, thanks, folks.
Have a good evening, everyone.